Council Ways and Means Committee, we're here for three hearings today. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee. Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee. Council Vice President Sharon Green Milton, 6th District Member of the Committee.
Thank you.
And Councilman John Bullock, 9th District Sponsor of the two bills. We're going to start off with Council Bill 22-0209, Sale of Properties, 620 North Caroline Street. Let's start with, do we have HABC here? If you can, someone from HABC just, yup, so you've got to come up to the mic. And then I need you to give me a 30-second explanation of what this is. And please keep it to 30 seconds. And you can take your mask off.
Good morning.
State your name for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Limbit Yogi, and I'm with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. I am Project Manager overseeing the redevelopment of the Perkins Somerset Old Town Homes. 620 Caroline Street is part of additional phases of development and working with the developers for a development proposal to convey the property to be redeveloped as renovated for a wet lab.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. Colleagues, we'll come back to agencies if there's any questions at the end. Oh, you can grab your seat, you're good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Law Department favorable, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Finance does not oppose?
We stand by our report.
Excellent. Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development favorable?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I just wanted to acknowledge a few other team members in the audience today. We have Ms. Stacy Freed, who is our Chief Administrator to the COO. And we also have Mr. Tony Badon, our Director of Land Transactions. We stand by our report in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, no objection, Nina?
Correct, yeah. DO2 stands by its report with no objection.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate favorable? Anyone? Comptroller's Office? Okay. Department of Planning favorable? Ms. French, you're good with that? You don't?
Yup. Department of Planning recommends that the council find that this property is no longer needed for a public purpose and recommends approval of the bill. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City, PABC, does not oppose. Chris?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. This is Christmas age from Parking Authority. We stand by our bill report, which is not opposed.
Excellent. Thank you. Board of Estimates, this will be sent to BOE after council approval. Colleagues, any questions for any of our agencies? Seeing none, we are going to go into, any public testimony? Sorry, I'm a little rusty at this. Haven't been in here in about two years. No public testimony? Excellent. Okay, we're going to go into recess on this bill, and we're going to come back and vote shortly. Next bill, Bill 22-0193. You're, yup, everyone who's just here for that, you're good. Yup, you're good. Crystal?
I'm okay. I'll just...
Sure? It's not that exciting, trust me. Okay. Next up, Council Bill 22-0193, Real Property Tax Credit for Energy Conservation Devices. This bill was introduced by Councilman Bullock from the 9th District. Councilman, if you could give a brief introductory remarks, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. Again, you know, this bill is really geared toward environmentalism, but also in terms of tax relief for some of our citizens. This bill actually came to me, the idea came from a citizen in our district who actually did install solar devices, but realized that we were not in a place to be able to provide what Baltimore County provides. And so, that tax incentive, I think, is something that would be great in Baltimore City. I think it would encourage some of our residents to actually invest in geothermal devices. And so, I do appreciate the co-sponsors. I appreciate the time today, and appreciate the questions, and look for a favorable report. And if there are any questions for me, please let me know. But again, I thank you all for considering this bill.
Thank you, Councilmen. Let's start with the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation. Chap, Mr. Holcomb, you've got a mic.
Good morning, Eric Holcomb. We're Director of CHAP. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development, defers to Finance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock with DHCD, we stand by our report and defer to the Department of Finance.
Excellent. Department of Planning, Mr. French?
Planning Commission, excuse me. Department of Planning is recommending approval because in addition to providing financial incentives for renewable energy, it will also help the city obtain a reduction of greenhouse gas, and that is a target that the city has set. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Office of Sustainability, favorable with amendments. We're waiting on them?
So, the Office of Sustainability, the representative is on their way. They do recommend approval with amendments.
Oh, Nina, mic? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Thummelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, representative for the Office of Sustainability is on their way. But they did support the passage of the legislation with some amendments. I don't know if those were circulated to the committee, but I can send them around in a moment, if that's okay.
Yes, we're, we will wait for them, I guess. But we're not going to consider their amendments until they get here.
It's in their report. I hate...
It's in their report. Okay, I guess we will consider their amendments. Very good. Law Department, favorable with amendments.
Members of the Committee, Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Yes, we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency so long as the lines 11 through 19 on Page 3 are deleted. And I believe that the amendments I saw written up have that in there, along with one of the things we suggested, which is not legally required, but figure out if you want to have this property tax credit be able to be used with others or not. So I think that the amendments being circulated are picking the option of not using it with other property tax credits. I just want to be clear that that's not a legal requirement. I just mentioned you might want to consider it because most of these tax credits in our local code, pick one or the other. Usually they say, if you get this, you can't get any other city subsidies, or they don't. So just pick whichever, you might want to pick whichever way you want to go. Because if you leave it up in the air, somebody might try to get this and something else. So decide if that's what you, if you want them to be allowed to do that. If that's making sense.
Yeah, and, just pulling up your amendments real quick. So Amendment 1 on Page 2, strike beginning with "at" in Line 32 down through "sought" in Line 33?
Yeah, it's essentially Page 3, Lines 11 through 19.
Actually, I was going with, I'm sorry, I was going with amendment...
I think Legislative Reference Incorporated them?
Yeah, so Amendment 1 on Page 2, strike beginning with "at" in Line 32, and that's at least 90 days before the first tax year for which the credit is sought.
Right.
And you want to strike that, or you're suggesting to strike that, correct?
I think you just, I'm suggesting you should look at that because the way it was written does preclude people in certain circumstances from getting the full amount of the credit, which I doubt was your intent, but it's legal. It's just, I don't know if that's what you want to do. Like, basically, the 90-day could screw you up, as I said in like the third big boring paragraph of my report, about like, you know, essentially, if you seek reimbursement for something, and you have, for example, you decide to have this installed, so you pay for it, and then you have installation costs. If you happen to be in that weird situation where you have gotten this thing, and it is within less than 90 days of when the tax year starts in July, you could be in a situation with this where you only get part of the amount of what you spent, simply by operation of this calendar. So that's legal if you want to do it, but I'm assuming you didn't want to do it. So, you know, I would just think about how you want to handle this. Because for most people, your intent will be realized if your intent is to get the full amount that they spend. But for some people, like the sort of scenario I put in the bill report, essentially, if you do this within a certain number of days, less than 90 days before the tax year starts, so July 1, if you're purchasing something within that timeframe, you may end up in sort of a place where you, you know, because you also have to have incurred expenses within 12 months of the tax year, you could find yourself not being able to take the credit because you incurred these expenses less than 90 days before the tax year starts. So you've missed the application window, but then that puts you more than 12 months from the next tax year in which you're no longer entitled. So I'm assuming that's not what you wanted. You can cut people off that way, but so the recommendation wasn't to do one or the other. It was just to point out that this may cause an unintended consequence that you'd probably end up back here modifying the law for.
Got it. Can we turn to the sponsor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Hillary Ruley, for walking us through that. And it took me a while to get it as well. So the two amendments that are in front of you, the first one is really that clarifying language around the 90 days, right, which makes it simpler in terms of reading and operationalizing it. So I think that one, we're pretty good with. And then amendment...
So real quick, you're in support of Amendment 1 to strike that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it.
In support of Amendment 1. And then you want me to talk about Amendment 2, or you want to wait on that?
Yeah, yeah, Amendment 2.
Okay, and then Amendment 2, again, we're open to that. That was something that we talked about with Law, and as Hillary Ruley just mentioned, again, it's not a requirement. But again, I know that there's been concern around the duplication of tax credits and maybe bundling those together. So I'm open to that, Amendment 2 as well, but definitely want to have the committee weigh in to see if that's something that you thought would be appropriate as well.
Does, do we need Amendment 2 to be approved for form and legal sufficiency?
No. In fact, the only thing that needs to be for form and legal sufficiency is the cutting of Lines 11 through 19 on Page 3. The other two are just suggestions. Again, as the Councilman said, one is a suggestion, do you want people to be able to take this credit and another local credit, or do you want to force them to choose this or some other local credit? And it's just, you know, most of our tax language says things like, if you get this, you can have no other tax relief or subsidy or whatever the magic line, but you don't have to do that. So I'm just saying, it will be, it'll be silent. And so, some people may go, right now, as it's written, it's silent. So do you want people to be able to take this credit along with another, you know, credit or not? I can't think of one off the top of my head, but CHAP probably wouldn't work. But like, somebody could, you know, for example, get some other local real property tax credit. I'm making this up, but pretend you get a Brownfields credit. Do you want them to also be able, and that's probably a bad example, but do you want them also to be able to get this too? Or do you want it to say, like many of our credits do, this is it, this is the one you get, this is your only, you may not get this credit if you get another local tax credit from the city? So again, either option is legal, I don't have to approve it, but just do you want it or do you want it to remain silent and confuse people?
I mean, I, this is, the credit is really for the conservation device?
For the installation of...
As opposed to the real property? So I don't, I'll defer to you as a sponsor. Do you, do you want to be able to get this credit in addition to an existing?
I think that would be great to be able to get it in addition to others. So I'm fine with Amendment number 1. Amendment 2, I don't think we necessarily need to have.
Fine.
Okay.
And same with the whole wonkiness on the application thing. I mean, it's not illegal, but I'm assuming you want to help people who apply within 90 days of the tax year starting, and not barring them from ever being able to recover because they missed the application deadline, but then they're more than a year out from the next tax year.
And Hillary, real quick, because the document that was provided to us by DLR...
Right.
It sounds like it combines, we still need to remove Lines 11 through 19 on Page 3, no matter what?
Right. And so it does look like DLR took my two suggestions and then the one requirement and put them all in together, assuming that you were going to pick them all, but that's up to you, so...
Okay, so colleagues, in the amendment sheet that we have, we're going to bifurcate striking lines 11 through 19 and make that its own amendment. That's going to be Amendment number 3. So Amendment number 3 is going to be Page 3, strike lines 11 through 19, and that's it for Amendment 3?
Yeah, and that's the only one that's legally required. The other two, it's totally up to you.
Okay, great. Department of Finance?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Hillary?
Yeah.
Can you help me understand the overlapping or overlaying of credits, just one step further?
Yeah, let me...
So the, the bill says that the amount of the credit is the lesser of 50% of the eligible costs, or 5,000 for heating system, 1,500 for a hot water supply system.
Right.
And then the next section says the amount of the credit cannot exceed the amount of the tax imposed.
Right.
Does that, does that mean if my, if my property tax is $3,500 for the year?
Uh huh.
And I have some other credit where I'm only paying 1,500, just let's say?
Yeah, got it.
Is the amount imposed, the 1,500 or the 3,500?
The tax imposed is 3,500. That's the tax imposed on your property.
Okay, and so, the credit here cannot exceed the tax imposed?
Right.
So if I have some other $2,000 tax credit, to where I would otherwise be paying only 1,500?
Collins, can I tweak your numbers, because I know the point you're trying to make?
I'm just making, I'm just making numbers up out of...
Well, if your assessment was 3,500, and you're receiving a credit for $2,000, so at the end of the day, you only owe 1,500, I think what you're about to ask is, if you received another 2,000 for this credit...
If I received another 3,500, would I be owed 1,500?
Nope.
No.
No, and that's the point of this language. It's basically regardless of your other credits, it's capping what you get from the city as the tax, so that you can't buy like the mega system of environmental systems, and it costs $50,000, and you basically cash in, and you covered your 3,500 in real property taxes, and we owe you the 40 grand back. We don't. So that language is meant, regardless of your other credits, to say you can never, you can't make money off of us. You can only get a real property tax credit. So you can never get more than the tax imposed.
Got it.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, and, I'm sorry, can the sponsor just explain the extent of this credit? Just the general credit?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Can you just explain the credit? Like, how much do I get? I don't, 50% of the eligible, 50% of the eligible costs, what does that mean?
A mathematical equation, I'm not really good to jump right now. But did you want Finance to address it?
I mean, I can just pretend like, okay, so in your other example, your property has a $3,500 tax bill, you have a, we'll make this up, you have a $2,000 credit from something else, and now you want to install this system, okay? Let's say you, so you, right now, you owe $1,500 in taxes, and then the system costs, let's say the system costs $500, and all of those are considered eligible expenses, then you would get $500 off of the 1,500 you owe, and you'd end up owing 1,000. Does that make sense? Or are you trying to figure out?
Yeah, so the eligible costs are just money that I spend on a system. Is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's written...
And it's for one year? No, how many years is the credit for?
No, I thought the credit was for one, a one-time only...
A one-time credit.
Credit, because you're getting, you're just getting essentially reimbursed for the cost of putting on your energy-efficient, fill in the blank.
Great, okay.
Which is why the 90-day language was so important, because you won't be missing on that one year, in terms of when they actually do it.
Thank you.
Right. If that's making, it's clear as mud now, right?
No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee. Okay.
This amendment is...
So we did Law, we did CHAP, we did DHCD, did Planning, all right? Sustainability's not here. Department of Finance? Take your mask off.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Board Director for Department of Finance. We put together a response based on, and market analysis that we did, we honor the intention of the bill. We believe that a tax rate is not the best way to approach this type of program. We also, our, our unit calculation was based on what the, what you proposed, $750,000 cap. We understand that that language might be subject to review, because we are not allowed to cap that legislatively in the budget. So we did an alternative analysis that is not part of this response. We estimate that roughly about $1 million will cost this type of program if we move forward. And we believe that the intention is very important nowadays, but we also think that there is market already for individuals investing in this type of equipment, and they're going to be, there's going to be a long-term return, which is by itself is generating savings on this type of investment. One aspect that we want to be very clear with you, and when we speak with the other legislations coming later, is that we know that the mayor has moved forward a tax credit initiative, a committee that's being formed to review all tax credits. And the Finance Department is in a very strong position to honor that committee and wait for any proposal related to tax credit, or new tax credit being proposed, until the committee provides a response, a recommendation. That committee is tasked to come with, find the best and most efficient program for the city. So I believe that this type of program should be also evaluated by that committee. We also have a list of concerns in reference to how the legislation is being proposed. There are some clarification items, some of them have been clarified by Hillary, but still there are some operational aspects that need to be looked at, and you have it in the report, so I'm, for now, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to ask any questions you may have.
Also, so thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for Finance's report. So two things really quickly. You mentioned in the report, your belief in terms of inefficiency in terms of applying it through a tax credit, and that naturally would happen. But we do know that, as you mentioned in your report, Baltimore County already has this in place. So what has been your assessment in terms of the efficiency of being able to get it done in Baltimore County?
We haven't talked to the county yet, but we're going to, we can reach them. We only know that they have the $750 cost for the credit. We don't know how they structure, but they annually budget $750,000 for granting this type of initiative.
Right, so ours kind of fits within that framework as well, as far as the cost as well?
Yes. What we did, and let me clarify something, when we did our alternative analysis, just to see how much could it cost to the city, we look at populations and number of properties in Baltimore County, and we look at population and number of properties in Baltimore City and apply that ratio, and that's how we came with a little bit more expensive credit than what Baltimore County has, because we are beyond the cap.
That's obviously projected, but also it's still within a certain framework, so I'm saying ballpark. And then the second thing, because I know this comes up in an additional report, you mentioned this tax review committee. Do we know when and if that's going, when it's going to actually happen? Because I don't want to be, you know, hamstrung in terms of what that actually, when that happens.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I'm going to be co-chairing that. I expect reasonably first meeting in June. The mayor's announced co-chairs, myself and Shalonda Stokes, President of Downtown Partnership. I believe that Mayor's Office will be...
Mr. Chair, I'm having a little hard time hearing you.
Sure. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So the mayor announced this task force back in October, co-chairing it, or myself and Shalonda Stokes, President of Downtown Partnership. I am hopeful that our first meeting will be sometime in the June timeframe, and I understand that the mayor's office will be putting out a press release to talk a bit more about that and the scope of that. As we get closer to the date, what I would say is, to Mr. Aponte's comments, that that task force is going to be charged with making recommendations to the mayor on the efficacy of existing tax credits in the portfolio, and recommending additional credits to address challenges such as hyper-incentivizing economic development in areas that have been traditionally depressed economically without displacing people, right? And other things of that nature. That task force is obviously a bit independent of the function of the City Council, so I understand Finance's position. I don't necessarily agree with it, that we're not going to take up any matters of tax credit until that group concludes its work, but that would probably be in very late 2022, most likely early 2023.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, for walking us through that. And that's, I think we're on the same page there, so enough said. Thank you.
Any other question?
Colleagues, any other questions? Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question I had was the projected costs. Is that assuming, just could you walk us through how you came up with the projected costs? I guess, is it based on the number of eligible properties, assuming a certain percentage actually apply? Everyone applies? I'm just trying to get a better understanding of...
Well, as the legislation is written, the cost will be $750,000. That's not, that will be the maximum. We know that Montgomery County has this program, Baltimore County has this program, and they have waiting list for people, you know, applying for this type of incentive. We have to also recognize that...
Can I pause you for one second, just to address the Councilman's question? Pedro, when you say $750,000, are you referring to the cap that's on Page 3, Lines 11 through 19? We're going to amend that out? Or just as a...
No, I understand that, but that was the, you know, draft of the legislation, and we thought based on what's happened in the market, we anticipate that the cost will be at cap. But now, we, we did, you don't have that information in our response, we estimated about $1 million in cost. And the way we did it is, we know what's happening, roughly what's happening with the program in Montgomery County, we know roughly what's happening in Baltimore County as well, and what we, the approach that we took is, how many individuals have applied to that program annually in Baltimore County, and take that ratio in terms of properties for the county? And we applied that ratio to us, and came with that number. But we have to also recognize that the features of energy devices, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the features of any installation, the energy devices, either geothermal or electric, the type of property in the county and Montgomery County, in Baltimore County and Montgomery County, might be different. And so there are some, not necessarily the same level of application that we'll see in the city, just because our structures are different. But the only approach that we found reasonable for the purpose of the legislation was going by the number of property, number of individuals applying in the county.
Yeah, I was asking that as well, and I'm glad you raised that point, because I would imagine we probably have more smaller properties, more warehouses than the county, they're probably covering a larger footprint of devices, just my guess, but I guess that would be a lot to try and calculate ahead of time. That was actually all I had for this round.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, so we've got, any public testimony? Anyone show hands? I think we're good. Marguerite, if, yeah, if they're not in here, they're not here. Okay. All right, so we have three amendments. Amendment number 1 on Page 2, strike beginning with "at" in Line 32 down through "sought" in Line 33. Councilman Bullock, it sounds like you all talked about that, and folks were, everyone seemed comfortable with that. Is there a motion to move Amendment number 1?
I moved the amendment. A second.
Sounds like a motion from Middleton and a second from Burnett. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed say nay?
All those opposed say nay. That amendment carries six, zero with one absence. Schleifer? Okay. We're going to skip over amendment number two for the time being. We bifurcated that, as you all recall, and we created an amendment number three, which is on page three, strike lines 11 through 19. And Hillary, if I heard you correctly, that's required in order for the bill to be approved for form and legal sufficiency.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Councilman Bullock, you were in agreement with law on that.
Yes.
So it sounds like everyone was on the same page on that. So with that, is there a motion to move amendment three, which is to strike lines 11 through 19 on page three?
So move for amendment number three.
Great. Motion by Middleton and a second by Burnett. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. That amendment carries six, zero with one absence. Finally, for amendment number two, I think what we heard today was that that was not necessary. And I think the sponsor, Councilman Bullock, was in agreement on that. So I, I don't believe there's a motion, but I'll keep the floor open and be quiet for the next five seconds. Excellent. All right, so now we're going to move to the, the bill. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
So move.
There's a motion by Middleton, is there a second by Burnett? Costello's a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Schleifer's absent. This bill passes six, zero and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the city council. We're going to go back and reconvene council bill 22-0209, sale of property, 620 North Caroline Street. Is there a motion to move that bill?
A second.
Motion by Stokes, second by Burnett. Costello's a yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Schleifer's absent. This bill passes six, zero and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the city council. Finally, council bill 21-0178, historic properties, definition of a historic property. I'm going to turn it over first to the sponsor, Councilman John Bullock, for brief introductory remarks. Excuse me.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the committee. Thanks for everybody coming out today. Again, another bill that's created an amount of tax credit, tax relief for some of our residents. As some of you know, I've actually sat, I've been the city council representative on Commission for Historic and Architectural Preservation since our term began back in, our, our first term back in 2016 for, for some of us. And so we do know that there are folks who have taken advantage of this, this tax credit, which we think is great. However, I think it'd also be great if more people could benefit from, from this tax credit. Initially, we were conceiving this in terms of properties that had been over 50 years old, but as you'll see in both CHAP's report and in terms of their amendment, which we support and we've talked about with law, that change in that language would be amenable not only to ourselves, but also to allow for more folks across the city to take advantage of this credit, not just in terms of some of the historic districts that we have in the ninth district, but also just citywide. There are a number of folks who want to make these investments in their properties, and we think that it would make a lot of sense. Again, we understand the state enabling legislation, and so that's why we have the language in there that would, that would address that. But again, I do appreciate the support thus far, and I look forward to hearing from our agencies in terms of why this is beneficial and how many folks it could actually help in this regard. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, councilman. Let's start with DHCD, defer to finance.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report in deference to the Department of Finance.
Thank you. Move over to planning. Let's start with CHAP. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, Eric Holcomb, Director of CHAP. I appreciate you having this hearing. We've recommended an amendment, which is pretty simple. It would remove the language of a structure built at least 50 years ago, as confirmed by CHAP, and replace it with language that states a property included within a boundaries of a certified heritage area. So we're expanding that historic definition in accordance with the state law. What that does is that will allow up to about 13,000 more properties to be eligible for this credit. Another way to look at it is neighborhoods such as Penn North, Carrollton Ridge, and parts of southwest Baltimore, among other parts throughout the city, would also be eligible. So it does expand this tax credit eligibility into some of our more distressed communities. And hopefully because of that, this tool will help with the revitalization of those communities. Thank you. Any questions?
We'll come back to questions. I do, I do have a question for you. Thank you, Eric. Board of estimates, this will be submitted to BOE if and when there's final approval, so we'll skip over them. Department of planning, I know CHAP's in planning, do you guys want to add anything? You have favorable and support of CHAP's amendment? Good, okay, great. Department of finance, unfavorable, opposes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pedro Ponte, Assistant Budget Director for the Department of Finance. We, as stated in our report, we oppose to this legislation. One item that we need to highlight is that the expansion, first, I mean, the, the bill says 50 years or more properties, that, that is supposed to be modified, is my understanding. Okay, so, so that modification brings to a map that basically expands certain areas within the city, but is still favoring areas that are roughly just a, a minor expansion to areas that where we believe the market is already there for those type of, of improvements and eligibility for, for, for assistance. We did our financial analysis. We believe that based on, on, or the, of the data that we currently have, about 184 individuals will apply for this credit every year. That's going to cost the city around two, close to $50 million in the next 10 years. That is in the top of what we already, the, the original shape of the CHAP program. One aspect that we would also like to bring up to your attention is that this type of credit is very expensive, because the way it works is that it's going to give 100% credit for 10 years on the improvement value of the property. That is one of, you, at some opportunity in the near future, will have the final report completed by Ernst &amp; Young, our consultant on tax credit. That report will indicate how inefficient this credit is, being one of the most expensive one that the city has. This credit might not necessarily be an equity component as intended by the, the city wants to move forward, and might not necessarily help a low income, individuals who want to make improvement to the property. Just as, as the way it's structured currently, we have 20, individuals need to invest 25% of their assessment in order to be eligible for the credit, but the only way for, for them to get the credit is that those assessments are recognized in the triennial cycle. For low income individuals, we are talking about $100,000 they need to invest in order to, as they need to get and do the reassessment of the property. I think the last, very last point that I want to bring to, in, in our report is bringing back the, the, the initiative that the mayor wants to move forward to evaluate tax credit. I think this is a perfect sample of one of the tax rates that should be evaluated and bring recommendation for efficiencies, and especially when, you know, there, there are a very long-term commitment of resources. And I will be more than glad to answer any question you might have at this point.
Thank you, Pedro. Finally, law department, unfavorable?
Right, so as the bill was written for expanding it to properties older than 50 years, that didn't match up with the state authorizing legislation. So I worked with the councilmen on amendments to, to get that there. For some reason, the state lists four types of properties that this credit can apply to, and the city lists four types, but when you actually compare them, the cities is missing a part that the state authorizes us to give a credit for. And for some reason, however it was written the first time, I find our language kind of confusing, so I worked with the councilmen to plug the hole that's there, so that you're giving the tax credit in the city for the full number of properties that the state law would allow you to. And you could always make it narrower, but the, it's not clear to me that the intent was ever to leave properties out. Maybe that was, but nevertheless, the language might look different, but I think we've gotten to a place where the amendments actually give you with the minimal amount of reworking the maximum number of properties that could receive this credit under state law. So if the amendments were to pass, then we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Got it. Thank you very much. Eric, the, the amendment that you all offered up, striking, quote, "built at least 50 years ago," as confirmed by CHAP, end quote, and substituting with, quote, "included within the boundaries of a certified heritage area," end quote, to Hillary's point, we're not narrowing the, the scope here, and your amendment doesn't conflict with what Hillary said, correct?
That's my understanding, correct.
And Hillary, that's your understanding?
I believe that that is the case, but like I said, the state law, and I'm just looking at it right now, is written sort of confusingly, so I will just double check real quick, but I'm assuming that they're fine. So let me just, I'll just double check.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm good, thanks. Pedro, do, do, when you conduct these types of analyses, do you, do you take into consideration the, the revenue generated from the piggyback tax on income?
Chair, no, we don't. We only do look at the property tax portion of the, of the, of the benefit to the city. However, I should say that when we do analysis for other tax credit, like in the budget publication, when we evaluate how many people come to the city or within, is fitted residence, we incorporate the income part of it. And what we have found is a lot of people who purchase these properties are moving from one area of the city to another area of the city. So the, the, the net increase in income to the city is not, is not representative.
So do we look at previous residency of folks who have utilized these credits?
The only one we have data, because we request individuals who apply for the newly constructed tax credit, and they are, they have to complete a survey. And that survey indicates where, where they were looking for and where they're coming from. Now, all of them, I know, respond, all the, all the answers, all the questions in their response, but that's the mean for us to know how many individuals applying for that specific credit are within the city, and we're looking already in, for city properties.
So on one hand, we don't collect that data except for the newly constructed dwelling tax credit, or more specifically, the high-performance newly constructed dwelling tax credit. But on the other hand, we're saying, I guess anecdotally, that it would be irrelevant to track the piggyback tax revenue, because most of these people that are taking advantage of this credit are moving from one place in the city to another place in the city.
That is an approach, and I will say one more thing. If you look at the population trend in the city, that means that we are, you know, we know we are losing population. That means that the net, the net gain of people moving into the city and moving out is very hard to estimate, but the, but just by doing that particular math, we will say that the income might not be, you know, beneficial in terms of people moving out and getting these type of properties in the city.
So just because the, the net in terms of population is down, doesn't mean that new people aren't coming to the city, and this credit or similar credits are not incentivizing them to come to the city as opposed to go to a surrounding jurisdiction.
It's hard to, it's hard to tell that.
I love you and all the people in finance, and I think you do a really fantastic job, but that story right there perfectly illustrates why we've been diametrically opposed on tax credit policy for the last seven and a half years, because the, the logic, in, in my estimation respectfully, doesn't, doesn't make any sense. But I, I nonetheless appreciate the...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So I think that there just needs to be a few words added to what CHAP wrote, and the reason I say that is because under state law, this credit is available to properties in the national register, properties in the local register, so essentially all these certified areas that they're listing. But if it's in one of the first two I mentioned, the listed on the national register or in a national historic or landmark district, or same thing for local, if it's in one of those districts, state law requires that the, that the credit also be compatible with local historic preservation standards. So in state law, you can't just like be in an area and then like make the house fluorescent pink and like put up craziness and get the credit. So the intent is you've got to both be in the area and then obviously have your improvements be ones that CHAP's okay with. So CHAP's credit expands it to the right number, the right type of property, but it doesn't have that state language. And I would recommend putting that in there, because while state law will always require it, at least if it's in your local credit, people will know, like you can't just be in those areas and get the credit. You've got to improve the property in a historically acceptable way. So I wrote it down in pen, and there it is.
Eric, do people do that, try to do that? I mean, paint the house fluorescent pink in a CHAP area?
If you receive the tax credit, you get a, a pre-preservation review and a post-preservation review to make sure you meet the guidelines.
So don't let them do that. Very, very good. Um, colleagues, the, the language that Hillary suggested for addition is at the end of amendment one to add, end quote, "and compatible with local historic preservation standards," end quote. She just explained that the justification for that, Councilman Bullock, let me start from you. Was that, are you in a good place with that?
Yes, that, that, I'm in perfect place with that. And then just to follow up your, your comments regarding finance and tax credits, I think I was going to echo what you said, to make it really quick. Again, we want to attract people to the city, and again, we need to be looking at it not from a deficit point of view, but from an asset point of view, and the things people want to take advantage of. So I think we're seeing things the same way.
Thank you, councilman.
Oh, and I did have one question, I'm sorry for, well, no, no, I'll wait.
Yeah, I'm going to come, I want to hit the, this language that we're adding to the amendment. Is there any questions on that language? Everyone's comfortable and, okay.
And to be clear, I didn't make it up, I just read it out of state law.
I, I've never known you to make things up.
Well...
When you go to Councilman Bullock and then over to Dorsey.
Oh, my question, my question was for finance, which was, I know your, your, your assessment in terms of the cost of the program, was that based upon the, the previous language that had over 50 years, but this would not include where we looked at now in terms of change in the language, right?
Yes, correct. We did our analysis based on the 50-year threshold. So if we have to, to do a different analysis, we have to narrow to the specific area that is now added to the, to the legislation.
And, and, and just the follow-up, I think that's, you know, that, I think that would be very critical in terms of this bill, in terms of having the correct information now that we have what the language will look like, what your assessment would be based upon the new language. So I just want to put that out there too. So thank you.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you. My question is along similar lines. I just, I guess I need planning to chime in here as well. The analysis finance did is based on a number of properties that will become eligible each year based on that age of 50 years. But what we have proposed here from CHAP, which seems reasonable enough, is substitute language for that concept. Am I correct? I mean, we just take away that whole 50-year thing and substitute this other criteria. What does that criteria get us in terms of numbers of units or each year or that is comparable? comparable to Finance's analysis? How many more properties are going to become eligible as a result of this language proposed by CHAP?
If we include the properties within the Baltimore National Heritage Area, that would include thirteen thousand properties. Not all those thirteen thousand properties are considered historic, yes, when each year goes along, property, more and more properties are considered historic, but I don't know what, what that answer would be. I think the, the, the top number would be thirteen thousand, but in reality, that would be several thousand less. That's probably the best answer I could give you.
Okay, so maybe ten thousand or something?
But I could tell you ninety-five percent of the properties in Penn North would be eligible.
Thirteen thousand is a lot. It's just thirteen thou, I mean, trying to get my head around this. Finance's projection here of a ten-year cost of just under fifty million dollars is based on one thousand eight hundred forty properties?
For the ten-year period, yes. So one eighty-nine the first year, and, you know, one hundred and eighty-nine applying every year. Their initial one hundred and eighty-nine will continue for the second year, the second one hundred and eighty-nine will continue for nine more, and so on.
And, that's based on, okay, I'm just want to try to better understand this Finance analysis, just one more minute. The Finance analysis says one hundred and eighty-four, one hundred and eighty-four properties, I'm, I'm going to just go on what was originally drafted here, so I understand this. One hundred and eighty-four properties becoming eligible multiplied by the average tax credit annually. Am I correct?
Yes.
Or is it?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It should be.
But in reality, it's only a fraction of the eligible properties that ever take advantage of the credit, am I correct?
With the new structure, yes.
Yeah, you have to, you have to actually do things in order to be eligible to get the credit. You don't just be, right?
Well, this calculation is eligible applicants. Hundred and eighty-four, a hundred and eighty-nine, the number, what, where the number is, is eligible individuals based on, or.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, there's, it's incongruous from the left side of the page to the right, because at the one side, we're talking about eligibility, and on the right side of the page, we're talking about a ten-year credit cost, as if it's an actual figure. So it's a, a potential cost that is highly unlikely to come into reality, right? Because only a fraction of actual eligible properties are going to avail themselves of the credit. What is the, what is the percentage of eligible properties that avail themselves of this credit? Right now, how many are eligible right now?
Um, there's approximately about eighty-three thousand properties that are within a national register and local historic district, and we have approximately six thousand, six, more than six thousand, uh, uh, properties that have gone through the program, probably forty-five hundred. These are, I don't know the exact numbers, but approximately about forty-five hundred have actually finished. I would say more than fifty percent of those have been vacant and abandoned structures in, in many areas. And this is, I would also suggest to you that more than fifty percent of those properties would not have done the improvements without this credit.
All right. So forty-five hundred properties have gone all the way through the process, out of, you said eighty-three thousand eligible properties? Did I hear that correctly? I have bad hearing.
Yes, and I could double-check with my numbers, too.
Okay, so eighty, that's a rate of five percent of eligible properties taking advantage of the credit. Out of thirteen thousand, that's seven hundred and four properties. That's a total, because it's no longer looking at an increase in the number on a schedule, you know, just based on age, as in the Finance analysis and the original drafting of this, there isn't a year, over year, over year, continuous accumulation of costs with this amendment, so this ten-year projection of forty-nine million is, this new analysis is three point zero eight million in total. Right? Because we're talking about a five percent rate of usage, even if it's ten percent, it's a six million dollar cost, ever. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Uh, he, his analysis just answered my question. We're good.
Best question of the day. Okay, we are, we're not voting this one out today, but we are going to consider the amendment. Come back to you.
I did actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I had two questions. It's for Mr. Holcomb. You mentioned the certified heritage area. Where, where would the committee, or could you submit to the committee a map of what those areas are?
Yes, I could, I could send you a, a map of that. It's also a map that overlays it with the national register and local historic districts, and you can see that, and I'll provide the numbers to you, which we received from our, our GIS folks in Department of Planning.
Perfect.
And that's different from a CHAP area, right, Eric?
That's correct. Yes, that's the map.
The CHAP area is the language that Hillary added, compatible with local historic.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, that's just a standards piece.
Uh, no, the language I added is actually just required by state law anyway.
Yeah, there you go.
The lang, yeah, the language I added just means like you can't.
I withdraw all questions.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Bless you for dealing with this map. Councilman Bullock?
Uh, so I do have one question. I think we're on the same page with everything that was just mentioned, so I'm not going to add to that. The one piece, though, assuming the CHAP property tax credit does not expire as scheduled in February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, can, can CHAP and Finance and Law talk about that, too? I think it'd just be worth people understanding what that means.
I'm, start, if that's right. Yeah, so the, the, we extended the credit from February twenty eighth of twenty-two to February twenty eighth of twenty-three. I, you know, depending on the timing of the, the mayor's task force that he's appointing to, to review all these credits, I, I think it would be very plausible that we would extend it for one more year to get through that and to just ensure that there's a level of certainty for folks, because that, that's one of the, that has been one of the big challenges, is making sure that there is a five-year sunset on these as opposed to a one or a two-year sunset, so that certainty exists, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it's an application deadline, so it's not like everybody who has the credit and they're in year five, they, their credit goes away.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Can we get a digital version of this?
Yes. Digital version.
Okay.
Eric, if, if you can send us a digital version of this thing. Um, okay. So we're, we're not voting the bill out, but we are going to consider, actually first, is there any public testimony on this one? Going once, going twice? Okay. So we're going to consider amendment number one, which now reads on page two and line six, strike, quote, "built at least fifty years ago, as confirmed by CHAP," end quote, comma, "and substitute, quote, included within the boundaries of a certified heritage area, and compatible with local historic preservation standards," end quote. Hillary, it sounds like you're comfortable with that language. That got us there for form and legal sufficiency. Eric, it sounds like your team at CHAP's supportive of that. Councilman Bullock, it sounds like this protects the intent of the bill. Uh, so with that, colleagues, is there a motion to move newly revised amendment one?
So moved.
Motion by Dorsey and a second by Burnett. All those in favor of amendment one say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. That amendment carries six zero with one absence. We are now going to go into recess, and we will reconvene in the near future, and that will be announced on the council website and an email from Nittwana. Thank you. If you could always have my [inaudible]. This is for email.